This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the May 27th meeting of the Brighton Board of Education. This meeting is called to order. I am Sue Gasparino and I am serving tonight as president for this evening's meeting. As at our last agenda, we announced that Mr. Davis and Dr. Lee are both unable to attend this evening. To begin our meeting, we're gonna start how we love to start and Dr. McGowan will begin with our Brighton Believers Awards.
Thanks so much, Dr. Gasparino. We're very excited to be presenting some awards to wonderful people this evening. The Brighton Believes Council selected these nominees. To receive these awards for demonstrating the Brighton Believes' character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. The award winners are students, teachers, staff members, parents, coaches, and community members. And again, we remind people, the nomination form is available on the website at bcst.org/believers. Please nominate people today. These are wonderful examples tonight of the great work and things that happened in this community. Our first nominee, if I could ask her to come up please, would be Jordan Betz Sar. You can come on up. Jordan is the Director of Community Mobilization for Miss Julie's School of Beauty. She was nominated by BHS teacher Dan Wilson. He wrote, "Jordan is a Brighton community member who absolutely embodies what Brighton believes. Jordan has come in to present to Brighton High School's 12th grade Law and Government classes multiple times." Through these voluntary presentations, she has shared the remarkable impact she and other employees at Miss Julie's School of Beauty have on victims of human trafficking in Monroe County. This amazing organization offers a lifeline to sex workers who have been victims of human trafficking and are being coerced into a life of abuse and manipulation by others. Jordan and her colleagues educate beauticians about the warning signs of these victims, help the victims get out of their dangerous situations, get clean from the dependencies they may have picked up as coping mechanisms or through forced addiction, and even train them so they can be gainfully and legally employed going forward. She also raises awareness of human trafficking with Brighton students and offers cautionary tales to increase empathy and knowledge. She is a fabulous resource for the Brighton community and deserves to be recognized. Congratulations. Our next nominee is Marguerite Opad. Marguerite, come on up. Is Coggins, if you could come on up? Coggins, come on up. And Corwin Hall is a nominator. And Mrs. Wheeler, if you'd like to come on up too, please. Marguerite is a FRES counselor nominated by student Corwin Hall and his family. They wrote, "Mrs. Opad has been working with Corwin since he started FRES as a third grader. She helped him manage big emotions and has been a helpful friendly guide for him since they first met. When he is at school and whenever Corwin might have any kind of difficulty, he's managing those big emotions on his own. Mrs. Opad provides him a safe and warm place to calm down and reflect. With his help, with her help, Corwin has shown dramatic improvement and has grown much more mature. The frequency of these outbursts, the big emotions, has decreased and when they happen, he's better at verbalizing his frustration and collecting himself faster." Good for you, Corwin. That's fantastic. Because of this growth, he's able to make friends and enjoy school. He's become popular among his peers and his teacher evaluations reflect his great maturity, focus in the classroom, and super social skills. Mrs. Opad's patience, kindness, insight, and hard work have done so much to help Corwin. We really appreciate all that Mrs. Opad has done for Corwin and we would like to nominate her for this Brighton Believers Award. Marguerite, congratulations. Corwin, our big emotion is how proud we are of you too. That was really nice of you to do that. Next up is Kristen Giroux. Kristen, could you come on up, please? A long-term substitute teacher. And Shirley's up already, Coggins up. Lonnie, if you'd like to come up, we'd love to have you also. Kristen, a FRES long-term substitute nominated by Lonnie Mazeroski. They wrote, "From the very first day she joined our school community last September as a long-term substitute for my teaching partner, Mrs. Giroux has been a perfect fit, embodying our core values of respect, responsibility, self-control, integrity, and kindness. For example, every single day, Mrs. Giroux records an explanatory video for caregivers, walking them through how to support their children with assigned math homework for families that may not have the necessary background knowledge. This is a true testament to her dedication to both students and families. She consistently meets students where they are and works hard to gradually increase expectations to help each child grow. Kristen even gives up her own lunch breaks, inviting students to eat with her to build social skills or to reward their work. Kristen is deeply reflective and intentional. She sets personal goals for herself, like finding more humor in daily life, and it has brightened not only her days but those of everyone around her. Her level of preparation and organization is so impressive, it leaves her colleagues wondering when she finds time to sleep. Yet despite her incredible work ethic, Kristen balances her home and school life beautifully. Her actions show clearly how important both her family and her students are to her. She's not afraid to be silly to keep students engaged and her deep knowledge and love of learning inspire everyone around her. Kristen brings unmatched effort and excellence to everything she does. She adapted to the fifth grade curriculum with remarkable speed and confidence, making it seem like she has been teaching it for years. She is always the first to step up when a colleague needs help, no matter how big or small the issue. Her students absolutely adore her and it is easy to see why. Kristen is the true definition of a Brighton believer and we are beyond lucky to have her." The BHS Muslim Student Association Leadership Team of Aisha Usal, Iram Osalek, and Amina Usal. Could you come on up? Nominated by Jen Wheeler, if you could come on up, Jen, please. Couple of high school administrators here too. Mr. Lincoln, Mr. Como, Mr. Bowens, Mrs. Paddock, come on up, please. Mrs. Wheeler wrote, "Our Muslim Student Association leaders helped to organize our school district's very first celebration of Ramadan and Eid al-Fitr on March 27. Students worked collaboratively to produce a script and short film explaining the meaning behind the holy month of Ramadan and Eid, celebrated by more than 2 billion people on the planet. We ensured that within the script, religious and cultural parallels were drawn with other popular holidays and traditions to make the cultural sharing meaningful. Students also helped to explain the importance of doing good deeds and spreading kindness during this holy month of the year. The homeroom activity MSHA chose was to create cards for adults and children with cancer through the organization Send a Smile Today. Students then sorted and organized 1,200 cards of goodwill that were mailed out. The ripple effect of completing a selfless good deed is immeasurable. All students modeled the values of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control throughout the script-writing, video-compiling, and homeroom-planning processes. I cannot think of more worthy candidates. All students helped in the spirit of selfless sharing in order to create a school-wide Student Center project which endeavored to celebrate diversity but also in helping those who are suffering from disease. Students, whether they realize it or not, helped our entire student body and staff to learn collectively about a holiday that is celebrated not only in other regions of the world but also in the United States. The video could not have also been accomplished without the magic that is Eric Gruner." Congratulations. Great job. So he often is behind the lens, but I do want to take a second and just acknowledge, Dan put so much of this together, works carefully with Kim also, but is always taking the pictures. Can we thank Dan Goldman? And thank you very much.
That's wonderful. Congratulations to all our Brighton Believers Awards winners. And just as a reminder, as we continue through the rest of the meeting, you are all welcome to sit through however long it takes here. But if you would like to go home and do the things that you might have scheduled for this evening, now would be a great time to step away. But congratulations. All right, moving on, we are going to move to the public participation portion of the evening. Is there anyone here tonight from the public who would like to speak? And if so, we'd ask you to please come to the podium, state your name and school district of residence. Seeing none, we will move on. We are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. The board here has had a chance to review tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Now on to the approval of the minutes from our meetings on both May 13th and May 20th. You've had a chance to look over the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for each meeting as provided?
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries. All right. Now, very exciting. It is time to move on to our monthly reports from each school. We're excited that this month, as we did last year at this time, we have some special guests with us and we have the opportunity to hear from our assistant principals making it happen every day in our schools. We will start tonight with Katie Schaefer from Council Rock.
Thank you so much. So I'm excited to present some of the things that Council Rock has been doing over the last month. One of the first pieces I want to talk about today is our Equ Center Field Trip. And two of our classrooms went for the first time as a group on a field trip and got to learn all about gardening, agriculture, and how to take care of horses. So all of our students were able to participate. Our occupational therapists attended, our speech pathologists attended, and they really had some great authentic language and motor skill tasks along their experience. And the kids had an absolute blast. It was really fun to look at all of the pictures. After the field trip, we did share the pictures out on our big screens at Council Rock so the whole school got to experience what they got to experience that day. And the kids really had a blast. We also celebrated walk, bike, and wheel to school week. Our PE department is phenomenal. And they celebrated with a big inflatable and the Bruin came. And we had dance parties every day to the point that on a couple of days, we had to say, "Okay, we gotta get to school. It's 8:21. We got some learning to do." So the kids really had a blast walking and then biking to school. We celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. Mr. Tappan and I did a lot of baking and a lot of cooking, but we had a lot of fun. We gave the teachers the gift of time, the gift of treats, the gift of a meal. And then also had school-wide assemblies that week where we talked to the kids all about kindness and we're building a kindness tree in our front entryway so the students can kind of connect things that we talked about in our assemblies to their acts of kindness in the classrooms. One of the other pieces that I wanted to talk about tonight was our author visit. Alicia Clapice came and did grade-level assemblies for kindergarten first and second grade. She's a nonfiction author who really focuses on the process of writing stories. So she does a lot of different research. She goes to different countries, she tries different foods. She really gets herself into a different culture, learns all about it, and then she's written some really awesome books. So we actually have each of her books now in our library. And so that was really fun to have her present to all of our students. Her main message is to explore the world, to be curious, and try new things. So that's what she shared with our students. One of the things that has been in all of our hallways in the month of May are different portraits of historical figures. We had a collaboration between our art teacher and our librarian. And they came together to do a research project all about different important historical figures to kids and then they created these portraits that lined our main hallway. It was a fun way to display art and connect it to their library special as well. We also had a really fun day. Ms. Rowan Foster got to shadow Mr. Tappan. She did do a lot of learning that day but had some really hard work, as you see in that middle picture, to get accomplished. She helped write the birthday cards and pass out pencils. So she really had a fun day shadowing Mr. Tappan. Some of the fun upcoming events that we have going on, we've got Play Day, we've got our second grade field trip to French Road, and we also have our end-of-year family picnic. So those are some of the things going on at Council Rock.
Thank you so much. That's amazing. I would also like to put my name in the drawing to shadow Mr. Tappan for a day.
Anytime.
If that could be arranged, that would be amazing. All right, moving on to the amazing Shirley Wheeler from French Road.
All right, let's see what I'm doing here. All right, so so much greatness happening at French Road the last, these last few weeks. We'll start off with how we ended April with our annual Staff Wellness Day. We had our usual volleyball, therapy dog, we had silent reading. We also had our walk along the canal, which is really one of the most popular ones that people sign up for. This is our second year with Burn Boot Camp and for the first time ever, we actually offered art therapy led by one of our phenomenal art teachers, Mrs. Tobia. We also had our annual Red Wings game performance. It's always a hit. We love just the joy that we see with our families and our students at this event. And then early May, we had an opportunity to celebrate our wonderful kitchen staff for School Lunch Hero Day. A huge shout-out to Tom and the kitchen staff for always serving our students with a smile. So we had our ice cream socials. They're always well-attended. This year, we opened fourth and fifth grade with their chorus concert, which many, many enjoyed. I also thought that combining these two events also helped families so that they would only have to come for one day versus two separate nights, but it was very well-attended. And in addition to that, many, many thanks to our art teachers, Mallory Gregor and Amanda Tobia, who put together our first art show. They worked so hard at making sure that every student had at least one piece of art for their ice cream social. I will say that the fifth grade one was out of this world. It was very beautiful. You walked into the gym and it felt like an art gallery. It was very impressive. And then our first annual Color Run. The kids really enjoyed, despite the muddy field. We were very lucky that the rain held out and we honestly look forward to our second annual Color Run next year. Here are a few pictures. You could see their excitement. We even had a dog visitor join us, many of our staff. It was a great event. And then just to highlight, we're at the time where we start getting our second graders excited about French Road. Ms. Coggins, Mr. Green, and myself, we visited Council Rock and gave them a little preview of what to expect at FRES. We also invited, you see him in the background, the Bruin, who helped us answer some questions for our second graders. The Little Mermaid musical is right around the corner. Here's a picture of our students who are working very hard practicing for the musical and we hope to see everyone there. We have our Staff Appreciation Week. It was great. We did a Fill Your Cup theme. Each day varied from writing a kind note of appreciation to a colleague and putting it in their cup, to a water station and ice cream floats, just to name a few. And then some innovative learning. So we have here Mrs. Gottfried's class engaging in Spirit Robot Obstacle Challenge. They had a fantastic time engaging in this. They did it in the Maker Space in collaboration with Mrs. Fallon. Using an iPad app, the Spirit Robot were controlled through block coding to manage their movement, their lights, and their sounds. Mrs. Gottfried's class applied their mathematical knowledge of angles, distances, and speeds to call the robots to navigate the course without bumping into the little obstacles and those are little bottle caps if you see them in there. The students did an excellent job at working together as a team, thinking flexibly, and persisting. And then to highlight another innovative learning from Mrs. Giroux's class, which you got to meet her earlier for the Brighton Believes Award, her class is engaging in science myth busting. So they're exploring science-related questions that students have. Many students see things online and that could be real, could be fake. The goal is to make them more aware of how to be smart digital consumers while also exploring the scientific method. As I walked around, kids had different questions such as, "Can they make slime from shampoo and conditioner?" "How many rubber bands will make a watermelon explode?" To, "Can balloons make people fly like in the movie Up?" But overall, Mrs. Giroux was really good about reminding the kids that the project has to be safe at school.
No watermelons.
Yes. And then some press events. We have our third grade ELA field testing coming up this Friday. We have our fifth grade crossover activity night at TCMS. We have our field day next week. We have our second grade family orientation bingo night. On the fifth, we have the musical. We have actually three different times. So the first one is on the sixth at 7:00 PM. And then on the seventh, we have, I believe, a 3:00 PM and a 7:00 PM. There's two shows on that Saturday. We have our fourth grade concert, third grade zoo trip, and the fifth grade sea breeze trip. We have our fifth grade celebration and then the last day of school for this year. And that's all. Any questions?
Amazing Shirley, and we appreciate the STEM emphasis today at the K-5 level. So that was awesome. Really cool to see the robots and the science myth busting. Very cool.
They had an excellent time.
Can you explode a watermelon with rubber bands?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll try that next week.
I don't think they'll try that at FRES, but we'll see.
Very cool. Thank you so much. Okay. Moving on to TCMS, we have Sean Brooks and Ashley Edwards. And the amazing Betsy Paddock.
Good evening. I am Sean Brooks, here to present about what's going on at TCMS. So we have a lot going on. You never realize how much you have going on until you put together this show for you guys. So this explains why we're all always so tired. So I'll start with our sixth grade Greek banquet. So I visited a sixth grade classroom, well, I was invited in a sixth grade classroom, but they invited me at the end, so I didn't get to share the food with them. So they celebrated their unit about Greek culture and mythology with the sixth graders that day. As you can see, they get dressed up in their garment and they have Greek food to celebrate and things like that. For seventh grade, activity night, so this captures the last activity night they had. They went a little old-school. They brought the Twister Challenge Board. So that was pretty fun. They had a good time. As you can see, the open gym is always the popular one. And then I didn't get any pictures of the dance floor this time around, but that's a popular one too. So that was our seventh grade activity night. And then our eighth graders had their more of a formal dance, the PTSA. Really jazzed it up this year. As you see, they made a little red carpet for them as they came in. All of the kids have grown tremendously from sixth to eighth grade, so I wish I had more pictures to display that. But we designed our atrium and balloons and it was really sort of a dress-up gala. So that was a pretty good time as well. Then we have Brighton Town Clean Sweep. This year, we combined with the high school to do clean sweep around our campus. So that was a pretty good time. The rain held out. It rained literally maybe an hour after we finished. So it held out. We did good. The kids had a nice time. Survivors play. JCC put on a play for our eighth graders. It was very interesting. It was about an hour and a half played and they allowed time at the end for students to ask questions and a lot of students asked some pretty engaging questions. So these are just a few pictures of the cast, different scenes from the play.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ashley Edwards, also one of the assistant principals at 12 Corners Middle School. And it is really nice to get an opportunity to speak about all the fun things that are happening in such a short period of time. But this past month, we also were fortunate enough, Mrs. Ellis and Dr. Wagstaff, who are co-chairs of our Diversity Committee of the PTSA, were able to secure a guest speaker for our 12-1-4 and our 15-1-6th grade ELA classes. And Ms. Stephanie Peridis-Mariposa came in and presented to the students and she did this really interactive, engaging experience where students were able to ask questions. She also read to them the book called Just Ask by Sonia Sotomayor. And it was a really great opportunity for students to ask questions and for her to talk about how celebrating our differences makes us all better and part of the community. Additionally, we had both of our jazz bands, led by Claire D. Felice and Justin Perez, perform at the Lilac Festival. Students had an amazing time, along with Chris Cole's Select Choir this year is a new singing extracurricular activity that we have at TCMS that worked really hard for their performances and had an absolute blast. We also celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week early on in the month with this VIP Hollywood Stars Treatment. So each day had kind of a mini-sub-theme within the theme for the week. You'll recognize the red carpet on the bottom there that was used for earlier things that then they repurposed for this week to honor the teachers and all of the hard work and dedication to our students. We redid our faculty lounge to honor that and you can see some of the lights, camera, action, VIP treatment that they received. Oh, and two other things, I don't have slides for, sorry. One was Brighten Your Wardrobe came to all of our lunches, which was really great and students had an opportunity. Every student that wanted something or was interested in looking and seeing was able to pick something up and take something home and even for younger siblings, which was really sweet and thoughtful. And also, we had our Five Go Six Transition Meeting. So Dr. Edmonds, along with one of our school counselors, Michelle Peters, and many of our TCMS students went over to FRES to present to the fifth graders and allow them the opportunity to ask any questions about coming to the middle school next year. So that was a really great opportunity too.
Hi, everybody. Betsy Paddock here and I am the administrator for TCMS and BHS for the ASPIRE program. So it's great to be working with both teams here. So I love this because I get to talk about these trips that we go on as part of the eighth grade world languages. So the German trip that is put together by Mary Ann Walter, one of our German teachers who So the German trip who's put, that is put together by Mary Ann Walter, one of our German teachers who does a fantastic job. From May 14th to 16th, they went to Stowe and they all stayed at the Von Trapp Family Home. All of you know that name because the memoir that was written was the inspiration for The Sound of Music. And some of the highlights for this trip is that they do a tour of the grounds. They go to Ben and Jerry's factory tour. They tour a maple sugar shack and they go to Lake Champlain, the chocolate factory that is there. And they also have an Austrian buffet, which was quite enjoyable from what I understand. And then I was able to be on the Spanish trip to New York City. It was a little bit rainy, but that didn't dampen anybody's spirits. We had 77 students and two buses. So all of you are thinking, oh my gosh, how did you manage all those kids in New York? Of course, we did it beautifully because we always do. It was a jam packed few days and Heather Morgan did a fantastic job of putting this trip together. The tour guide was a woman that we had last year. Her name is Amy and she is from Washington Heights. So she was born and raised there. She even showed us where she grew up as we were heading up to the cloisters. Some of the highlights for this trip were the salsa dancing at the Alvin Alley Studios. So we had a professional dancer that worked with the kids. We had dinner at both Cuban and Mexican restaurants. We toured Ellis Island. We took a tour of the cloisters. We went to the top of the rock, which is definitely the best view of New York City. We toured the living garden, which is a new structure that they put up in 2021, I believe. Toured Central Park and just had a great time with the kids. And there were so many kids that had not been to New York before and it was highly enjoyable. And then finally, we had the TCMS Talent Show last Thursday and it was the largest crowd that we've ever had. There were 13 acts. There were pianists, there were violinists, singing, dancing. We had it all, just amazing. And I'm always so impressed at the courage it takes for middle schoolers to really step outside their comfort zone and get on stage in front of all their peers. We also had a panel of judges, which are our, some of our teachers. And they get all dolled up and they walk out and they make up a bio and it was so much fun. And Kristin Halligan and Erin Burtner did a fabulous job. And then we had two MCs that are fantastic performers in their own right, Katie Laird and Taylor Howe. So they came over and emceed and they even did a little number themselves, which was really fantastic. And then I have some upcoming dates here. And as you can see, we have many concerts coming up. We have the crossover night this Friday. We have the spring celebration, the eighth grade bonfire, which we will say farewell to our eighth graders as they go over to BHS. And then we have the TCMS play, 30 Reasons Not to Be in a Play. Sixth and seventh grade students on the last day of school go to Seabreeze. Eighth graders will go to Dorian Lake. And I always like to say, you know, with, with these concerts and for the plays and the musicals, it's like that is their game. So we want to make sure that we encourage people to come out and support them. So thanks so much.
Thank you so much, TCMS.
I'm gonna stay here.
Are you gonna stay? That's why I didn't introduce you before.
Because I'm just gonna stay here with the high school.
All right. So let's bring up to join the amazing Betsy Paddock, Mark Lincoln and Jabril Bowens representing Brighton High School tonight. Oh, and Matt Como. I'll get this by the end of the night. We're gonna have everybody mentioned.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about all the great excitement that's happening in the high school throughout the month of May, especially with a variety of student life events going on, whether it's senior nights at our athletic events or concerts. There's so much excitement in the building. That said, it's also a critical time for our students academically as they finish up a lot of class projects, AP exams, gearing up for final exams in a few weeks. So no shortage of energy at our high school right now. This is a little snapshot of the great things we have going on. So as AP Brooks mentioned earlier, we had the 22nd Annual Brighton Clean Sweep a few Saturdays ago. The rain did hold up, which was awesome. We had over 65 students come and share a donut or a bagel together and participate in a great community event, all for, for a great cause. We also had just last week, our Senior Decision Day. A big shout out to our counseling center for organizing this great event. On the surface, a great time for seniors to get together and take pictures and talk about colleges, careers they're going into, trades, military, gap years, whatever they're doing and excited about for the future. But on another level, it's a great opportunity for our underclassmen as well to see all the great places that BHS can take you. And it's just great to hear the freshmen asking questions and seeing all the things they're doing throughout this decision day. But our counseling department does an incredible job bringing a special level of excitement to this great event. And then also we want to include this picture here. This was an ice cream social we had last week sponsored by our Friends of Rachel and our Culture Climate Leadership Team. This was one of about five after school events that we had this year, open to the entire building that became really popular. As you see, we had over 70 kids come for this ice cream social. And just a great opportunity for kids who are really busy in the evening, sometimes hard to commit to a club or a big special event. But they certainly can stop by after school for some ice cream with some friends before they go home. And these are things that we hope to continue to do more of next year as a lot of students are reporting really positive experiences with it. So I'll turn it over to Betsy once again.
So I had the opportunity to go to the junior prom and once again, it was at Aron Dacoit Country Club. The kids had an absolutely fantastic time. It was one of those nights where it started to rain and then it stopped raining. And then I think they had some sun for some pictures. We had about 300 kids who were there and Aron Dacoit certainly didn't disappoint. It was beautiful. The food was excellent. The kids were really well behaved. The DJ was fantastic and they all had a really amazing evening. The Senior Bash. So this was Thursday, May 22nd from 6:30 to 10:30 PM. There were 200 seniors that were in attendance. And highlights were the whole entire first floor had a miniature golf course set up. So that was really fun. Empanadas were a huge hit. And to end the night, they had a mentalist this year, not just a hypnotist. And the mentalist is a mind reader and a hypnotist. And the kids really seemed to enjoy that. And they, you know, it's just such a huge tradition at Brighton High School and it was really neat to see it in action this year. And then finally, we have Spring Fest. And this was actually the first Spring Fest that I was able to participate in because I was over at the high school before during COVID and I think it all got canceled. So we have, as you can see here, an abbreviated schedule in the morning for classes. And then we had a whole bunch of different activities going on for a couple of hours there, as you can see. It was indoors, but that did not stop people from having a fantastic time. We had basketball, cornhole, face painting, snacks. There was a huge, something that resembled like Hungry Hungry Hippo, but with people, which was, the kids loved playing it. And it ended with a talent show. And the talent show was, was for both staff and for students. And the fourth episode of the BHS Office came out and the kids really seemed to love it. And it was just a great time. And I also want to say, you know, Mark, you do a fantastic job with all of the clubs and activities and, and all of these special events. The amount of time that goes into it. And then we have the ball coming up this weekend as well. And I also want to say, you know, Jabril, everything that you've done with APs and you're gonna talk about that. And then Matt, so much that you do with scheduling. This is a really wonderful team to work with as well as the people at the middle school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Jabril Bowens. I oversee testing at BHS. And we just completed three weeks of AP testing. This year was the first year that AP, our college board, has offered hybrid or fully online testing. And I'm sure there's a lot of things going through your mind when you hear about that. And we did experience some, some issues that you're probably thinking about. But overall, it was a great experience for all 533 of our students who took over 1,200 exams over a three week span. And as you can imagine, that takes a lot of planning and preparation and flexibility. So I, I really do want to thank our custodial staff at BHS and at Central Office. And I want to thank all the teachers who did their part in prepping our students to be prepared to sit for those exams. Special shout out to Sandy Hellman, who came out of retirement to help me with these. So I'm very, very thankful for her. I'm looking forward to working with the next person to get that going for next year. But on to June exam. So it went, went pretty well this year.
Hi, everybody. I'm Matt Como, Baton Cleanup here for the team. Here to talk about the construction projects that are all going very well. We have a number of them, as you know, coming up over the next couple of years. We'll highlight the two that are actively underway. We are building the new entrance to door 20, which is going to be also the new attendance office. It, it's bumping out, you know, the construction zone into the parking lot, but that whole rerouting of traffic over there has gone really well. It really seems to be moving along. We're excited to have that entrance. It'll be a nicer way for the students to come in every day and have the attendance office right there as everyone is, right there, security and attendance right in the door 20 area. We're also setting up for work on the tech wing. So if you take a look there, that part of the building near the creek is fenced off at the moment and they are getting ready to start work on the tech area. If you look at the drawing, it's gonna be really pretty amazing. And everything seems to be moving ahead on schedule, which is also super exciting. We're always very happy about that. We also have many, many upcoming events, some concerts. We have our sports signing in the gym, the fashion show, the second annual, that's super exciting. Awards night is coming up on the 11th. Amazingly, we're really close to the last day of classes on June 16th and graduation on June 24th. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So much going on. Thank you so much to our assistant principals for coming out tonight. Like your passion for students really shines and we're so appreciative of all your work. So thank you very much for presenting tonight and for all the work you do. Moving on, we are going to talk about our blueprint. And so the Brighton Blueprint, which you hear us talk about throughout the year, is really the roadmap, our roadmap of the district. It's the annual plan that keeps us focused, aligned and clear in our goals, our objectives and our work. This week, we'll actually be sending information out to our community, asking for their input into next year's plan and asking for community volunteers to participate in the planning process. Tonight, we are very excited to learn more about the work completed for this year. And so here to share with us tonight are Dr. Allison Rio, Deanna Spagnola, Lou Alamo and Jeff Green. Welcome.
Thank you. So excited to be able to take a look at, I'm gonna highlight, mental health, wellness and student support. I'm gonna be highlighting some aspects between the last time we came out and shared, but also celebrating the work that's gone on all year and the work that will be continuing to next year because it's not a necessarily an end goal. We continue, we refine, we become more targeted and specialized with where we want to head next. So just to highlight here, just last week, the District Mental Health Team met with the URMC team and there'll be more information coming about an upcoming program called SPACE, Supporting Parenting, I can never say that fast, for anxious childhood emotions. Referral information will be on its way, but that'll be beginning this summer for parents in particular, hopefully in person. But we will also be able to offer some opportunities for families both virtual as well. We're really excited about this partnership. And again, another example of how our partnership with URMC and Galisano continues to grow and expand to support the needs of our parents in our community. Mr. Green's gonna be talking about, I know in his slide coming up, about how the Mental Health Steering Committee coordinated with him in terms of updating a family resource page. Really excited about that to get, again, for our parents to be able to get information more easily and more readily. Another shout out to Mrs. Paddock and Parent University. It has been extremely well received, highlighting there the three different Parent University sessions that were provided and offered this school year. More to come on topics that will be identified next year. But I've been sitting in many different forums where, whether it's parents or leadership or staff, asking to continue Parent University. So full steam ahead and thank you, Betsy, for your work on that. Continuing to look at curriculum in the area of social emotional learning. And you can see some of those pieces highlighted there. Also continuing to look at our Professional Development Day. Our District Mental Health Team spent Superintendent's Conference Day taking a deeper dive into the alignment of the social emotional curriculum and the mental health transfer goals. Really drilling it down even more specific to where activities and lessons by building would be had. I didn't sit in that. I'm looking for some confirmation from people over there, but I know that they said if, if you're doing this, for example, at Front Road, we should be doing this particular lesson at the middle school or vice versa. I'm just giving examples of that. But they really took that to a much more detailed level and we appreciate the work on that. The Mental Health Program Evaluation will be continuing through the rest of the school year, the summer and into the fall. So more to come on data that comes out of the Social Emotional Learning Survey. We had members of our program evaluation team come together to identify and look at the questions that went out to the community, went out to staff, went out to students as well. What will be the questions that will help move the work forward or help us with our program evaluation? And we are planning on some student focus groups to be had in the fall that will help also with our program evaluation there as well. Special educators K through 12 were able to be together on Superintendent's Conference Day. So we could take a look at all together. It was the first time in a very, very long time where everyone was together at district office to, we could ensure some consistent practice, ask questions, people got to see each other and meet people they maybe have never been in the same room with before. And we continued our professional development series around the 12-1-4 programming in terms of some of the curriculum that we're using. That's going to continue into the summer and to the fall. And we're really targeting our professional development, not only for TAs to develop much more specific and targeted professional development specific to programs, but what our parents and our families are saying and our TAs are saying that is needed. And then really collaborating with the Teaching Learning Center around a professional development series specific to special education and training need there for years one, two and three. And we're really excited. I was invited by the Special Education PTSD group a couple of weeks ago. Carolyn, you were there in that session and it was really great to be invited there. It was very, very well attended. Very excited for structuring our meetings for next school year and forums that will meet the needs of all of our families. Thank you.
All right. There's so much to say about the whole year in the short time. So I see Deanna going through it so quickly, but so much amazing work has happened and I'm gonna try and do the same. But it almost doesn't do it justice. We've done so many great things through our blueprint work this year. But in terms of academic excellence curriculum, we've accomplished a lot of great work this year. As I mentioned earlier in the year, we moved to putting all of our curriculum and unit maps into a new program in Power School. And we were able to do that at large throughout the school year. And on our March Conference Day earlier this year, our sixth through 12th grade teachers did a curriculum audit to see what was there and what was missing and kind of helped guide our work as we move forward into the summer this year. But we are moving forward in really awesome shape. And also on our Superintendent's Conference Day, continuing our work around transfer goals and the opportunity in the spring to look at student work for our sixth, 12th teachers together to see how students' work is progressing over the grade levels and seeing what should, we should be thinking about as we revise our curriculum. And then at the K-5 level, we had choice breakout sessions for our teachers in ELA, math and technology and social studies based on the findings from our student work analysis that was completed by our instructional leaders. But our K-12 Instructional Leadership Team at large led all of that work, all of our teacher leaders. So awesome, awesome work from them and all of our teachers who participated. And the, the other focus we've had this year is trying to take a look at our curriculum for Academic Intervention Services at K through eight. And we held a committee this year and each building, Council Rock, Fraz and the middle school has left with recommendations for their work. So they all look a little bit different depending where they are and the next steps that have to happen. But we've left some recommendations to continue that work moving forward in each of those school buildings. In addition, we've made some great progress around our equitable grading practices at 612, as highlighted in the blueprint. Dr. Edmonds and Julie Cop led a PD at the March Conference Day to kick off that work and had been really rocking and rolling, moving that forward with the staff there. And huge kudos to the Professional Learning Team and Dr. Hall at the high school and everyone who's been part of that work. They have put together just a phenomenal document that outlines equitable grading practices, put together really with a lot of input from the teachers and what's actually happening in the classrooms. And their voices are just all throughout this whole document and the building will unpack that together as part of their work next school year now that it's complete. Additionally, the District Tech Committee spent the year working on gathering input from different stakeholders around the schools and the community to kind of make, make a recommendation on what should be next around technology guidelines and expectations, which is kind of tricky because, you know, it looks very different at different levels. But this summer, we will be rolling out through Professional Learning for All Teachers on our District Professional Days, some technology guidelines. some technology guidelines that really highlight this ed-tech triangle here. I won't go into too much detail right now, but the focus of our work will be around looking at the different levels of technology and having teachers think about the different uses for it and why they're using technology to make sure that it's purposeful and thoughtful and really more on the transformative level as much as possible. You know, and the other levels you might touch upon for different things. So we have some great PD that we're putting together for this summer. And huge thanks to our assistant principals who sat on the District Tech Committee with Dr. Glazer and Eric Jordan and myself. And I think we'll be able to have some more clear guidelines that will be rolled out this summer. In addition, we are wrapping up just putting together homework practices and making a recommendation for each grade level at K-8. And we will roll those out before the start of the school year. So we're finalizing that as we, before June, and we'll share that with teachers as we get into next school year. And then as the Blueprint mentioned, we had a strong focus on Professional Learning around artificial intelligence over this school year. The Curriculum Council did a full-year study of looking at the different pieces around artificial intelligence that we should be thinking about, which has grown and changed every single meeting we had as new information came out. But really excited because as a result of our work, we've decided to purchase and we have purchased an artificial intelligence tool for our students and our teachers to use, beginning next school year, Magic School it's called. And again, our summer Professional Development for all of our teachers will be a training on how to use that as well as guidelines and barriers that we should be thinking about, you know, to help keep everyone safe as they're using artificial intelligence, but also to encourage the use of this tool as a support for teaching and learning. We had quite a few program evaluations this year, so I just want to briefly, briefly touch upon them. You heard from Deanna already that the Mental Health Program Evaluation is continuing into next school year, which is fantastic because just because the school year's over doesn't always mean that the work is over. It depends when it ends, right? So she's going to continue on. Music is wrapping up by the end of this month with some recommendations. But we've had two program evaluations wrap up already this school year and two of our board members sitting on those. So our Health Program Evaluation, thank you, Eleanor, for being part of that with our team. But the team has come up with some awesome recommendations. And one that I just want to highlight that I just love is continuing to build a collaboration with health, physical education, and mental health. Because a lot of the work they do together is around decision-making, goal-setting, things that we should be using common language for our students, you know, no matter what kind of program they're in. So there'll be some summer work around that, but some other highlights here you can check out as well. And in world language, thank you to Karen Hatch for joining that group. We also came up with some just amazing recommendations. The team was so fantastic. We got to talk to kids, we got to talk to teachers, we looked at some survey results and, you know, came up with some great recommendations. But really, their main work has been aligning their curriculum across the grade levels. That's been a project they started undertaking really seriously a few years ago and it's just been growing just like crazy. So really proud of their work and the collaboration across six, 12 world language teachers as well. And now I will pass it over to Jeff Green for the Student and Family Experience. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Hope we're doing well. Knows a lot of information at night. So I would like to start by saying thank you to the Assistant Principals. You really did a great job of being very, very specific about all the wonderful things that we have going on. So a lot of this is going to be a little redundant, but that's the whole purpose. So as mentioned earlier, that we had our first second grade transition assembly at Council Rock for our rising third graders, which we're really, really excited about. We have a ton of transition activities that have been happening the past several weeks, continuing tomorrow. We have some of our student leaders from high school coming over to talk to our eighth graders about what life is like at BHS. When it comes to student leadership, I know that the team at TCMS has been working on their CCLT work and are planning on wrapping up that work and looking at input from students on ways to continue to make the culture and climate at Twelve Corners Middle School a better place for everybody. The Inclusive Language Protocol has expanded throughout every buildings. Our teams at TCMS and Fresz had a little bit of a head start beginning last school year. But I know that at Council Rock and at BHS, introduction has been made with Kylan Svetlana, our partners at Bosse's, to introduce the concept to the staff with the idea of expanding it more in the coming years. School-based equity teams are wrapping up their work, continuing to find ways to meet the needs of the individual needs of students and families that may need additional support, finding ways to engage, finding to be proactive around some of the channels we're facing. I know that I was working with Danielle and her team around suspensions and disproportionality with that. We also met recently as a district to give feedback on what it's going to look like next year of some areas that we can focus on. A big one is transfer, students and families finding ways to support them. That was loud and clear from a lot of the committee members. And we're looking forward to opening up the, putting our minds together to figure out ways to continue to engage our new families. So as you heard loud and clear, there's a lot going on this time of year, the past couple of months. It is the time of celebration, the time of concert seasons, ice cream socials. A lot of different ways where our students and families have an opportunity to engage both in the district and out at different community events. We recently sent out the Family Climate and Culture Survey. We want to continue to get feedback for our families. We had a really great number of families that responded to us. We plan on meeting over the summer to look at the data and continue to try to make our school environment the best it can be for all of our students and families. Myself and Dan have also been looking at communication when it comes to the way that we are communicating with families. We are continuing to update the website. Some of the old ways that we have communicated with, we're going to be taking off and continuing to look at ways to engage families with Parent Square. And last but not least, I know it was already mentioned with the Awesome Fun Run that we have. It was an amazing event to engage our community and families and students. And luckily, I was able to escape without getting any color on my clothing. But most importantly, that dollar amount, it's really, really connected to the student access piece. $12,000 is a ton of money. And just to, you know, a reminder to everybody, the Student Support Fund, we get all of those funds from our great PTSA, who are amazing partners. And Colleen and Shirley, what an amazing event for the whole community. But more importantly, those funds are going to be able to go directly to students and families that need it the most. So really appreciated, appreciative of that event and looking forward to continuing it. I don't know what I just did. And then last but not least, Deanna kind of mentioned this in partnership. I got to give a shout out to Dan. He is the magician when it comes to the website, working collaboratively with our mental health staff members to really consolidate all the different resources that we have. Shout out to Matt Goodman as well. And the Steering Committee members to really find a one-stop shop for a lot of the resources that our families can go to in moments of need. So that is now live and really, really excited about. We also put an announcement out to the community that it is live and hopefully it'll make things easier for families to be able to access some of the outside resources and internal resources instead of having to go to different places. So with all that being said, looking forward to my five minutes of fame when we do our Blueprint planning and looking forward to continuing to work together to support students and families. Lou Alamo.
Good evening. And from the operations standpoint, again, our three big rocks within the operations area, safety and security, continuity of operations, and investment in human capital. As we present over the course of the year, we spent a lot of time in safety and security. Director Teresa Mosier has done an outstanding job putting together a comprehensive training program for really all stakeholders. And that's our commitment to partner with all our administrative team to, again, you know, do a gap analysis. Where do we need to spend more resources? Where do we need to spend more time in the objective of always being prepared? So she's done excellent work on that and I thank all of our leaders here tonight for that as well. The one thing that came up in our last leadership meeting, specific to training from our administrative team, is we're great, we're great with our tabletop drills, but we need to test ourselves a little bit more. We've got to get the adrenaline flowing a little bit. We've got to really test how we're going to do in a crisis situation. So that was a challenge to myself and to Teresa. And one of the steps towards that is to participate in I Love You Guys Training, which is more of a large-scale training exercise, two-day exercise. We're partnering with Honey Eye Falls, our first responders, and just really looking forward to continuing to always be prepared and how we're going to execute. God forbid something was to happen. Along with the continuity of operations, we've spent a lot of time on the technology and building systems piece of it from a continuity of operations standpoint. But we've also challenged our departments and our buildings, just really documenting what our standard operating procedures are so we can, again, always be ready should there be some disruptions. Our principals and administrative team have done an excellent job, excuse me, with just coverage schedules, getting our directors into the building, making sure they're aware of the happenings within each of the buildings. So again, next person up when needed. And investment in human capital, that's something that we're going to recommit to over the summer and really look closely at the objectives within that blueprint area. Thank you.
Excellent job, everyone. Thank you so much for that overview to all our presenters. And that really is, I mean, you packed an awful lot of material into a very short amount of time. And again, it's great for us to review, you know, the plan that keeps us focused. This is why we do what we do. So really appreciate all your time and presentation. Next on our agenda is the approval of new textbooks for the 2025-2026 school year. And Dr. Rio has previously sent us a memo regarding these approvals that you've had a chance to review. Can I please have a motion to approve the new textbooks as recommended?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. Any discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, I would now like to ask for a motion to approve the tentative agreement for successor contract between the Brighton Central School District and the Brighton Teachers Association. May I please have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. Any discussion, comments? Dr. McGowan, anything to add?
Yeah, I just would like to thank, first of all, the BTA for their partnership with us in this effort. Every time we sit down to do this work, we want to make sure that people are fairly and thoughtfully supported from a compensation perspective and that we continue to mutually focus on the conditions that allow people to do their very best work for kids, which they continue to do. So from their team and the work of our team and our board president, Larry Davis, of course, was on that team, representing all of you, as of course were us administratively, Dr. Rio, Mr. Alamo, myself. And we had a very good working relationship with the group and came to a place that we think is, again, thoughtful, effective, fair, but provides the right conditions for people to do the great work, continue to do the great work that they're doing. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye.
We did it first and then we did the discussion. It's a little different. Motion carries. We have the opportunity to participate in cooperative bids for a variety of supplies and food and beverage items. I would like to please have a motion to approve the cooperative bids. And I am going to be reading the names of all the cooperative bids and then I'll ask for a motion to approve in a second. So the cooperative bids are for ice cream and frozen desserts, school lunch paper and plastics, for food, for beverage, fresh produce, and athletic supplies. May I please have a motion to approve those as read?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Eleanor, seconded by Karen. Any discussion or comments?
I do like to tell Peggy, when she asks me why, what I do at the school board, I say, well, sometimes I approve how much ice cream we buy and the toilet paper. And she's like, well, okay. So tonight, Peggy, this one's for you.
Ice cream.
Those are exceptionally meaningful things to do. Want to ask what we prioritize? But both are fantastic.
And certainly the most glamorous aspect of our jobs here. Yes. All those in favor? The motion carries.
Don't acknowledge that you participate in purchasing the brown towels in the bathroom. I wouldn't recommend taking credit for that.
Paper products wasn't on this list this time, so we're good.
Finally, we have several items on our consent agenda tonight, including personnel changes, fundraising activities, and several generous gifts. You will hear me talk for a long period of time because there are several generous gifts. I will read them and then I will ask for a motion. So the gifts being presented tonight is a gift in the amount of $200 from Brighton Education Cultural Life Endowment Fund at Rochester Area Community Foundation for the D. Bradley Smith Art Awards for 2D and 3D art. Also, a gift of two three-tier spectator bleachers from Tom Braun, BHS varsity softball coach to the Brighton Central School District. Additionally, a gift in the amount of $1,275 from the Brighton Football Boosters to the Brighton Central School District Athletic Department to support the varsity football team to be used specifically for the purchase of a Go Root system. Also, a gift in the amount of $5,000 from Frank Spezio to the Brighton Central School District Twelve Corners Middle School to the Aspire Program. Also, a gift in the amount of $331 from the Brighton Lacrosse Boosters to the Brighton Central School District Athletic Department to cover the cost of field rental for the lacrosse team. And a gift in the amount of $3,000 from Friends of the Arts in Brighton to the Brighton Central School District Visual and Performing Arts Department. These funds are to be used for Brighton Summer Arts Scholarships. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Before we adjourn tonight, I would like to thank Joy, Mike, and Bill, who have helped us run this meeting smoothly, especially with an acting interim president tonight. Appreciate you. Dr. McGowan, anything that you would like to add?
No, just to, well, yes, I guess. I shouldn't say no and then add something. But I'll say just a thanks to our community for their support of the proposed school budget, which, you know, 83% of those who voted approved. And we appreciate their engagement in the process, but also really exceptional support, positive support in our community for the work that best supports students and staff going forward. Congratulations to our returning board member, Karen Hatch, on her reelection. Eleanor, thank you for your service, of course. And I know we have our newest board member, Clayton Jones, who's in the audience tonight. We're excited for him to join us on this really amazing team as well. So congratulations to all of you. But a special thanks also to our Chief Financial Officer, the leader of this work too, which is Lou Alamo, for his work in presenting such a thoughtful budget that helps us now, but for long into the future as well. So thank you.
Absolutely. With that, may I please have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you so much. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.